If you can, everyone, thank you for your meetings here. We appreciate your input. So let me remind you that this is a regular speak council meeting. It's not a workshop. And all that might flip in is prohibited to be in council chambers. This time, please silence yourself as a simple way. If you need to conduct any visits, please step outside of you. So electronic devices only as authorized by state law. Code five five one point oh two three are allowed. If you would please stand. A hollow. Please stand in place. Place. Any miss. Little things just. On the Texas platform. And please be. Okay. One state under God, one is just full. Please. Okay, we have a forum, the city secretary with all members present. Do we have proof of notice?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The notice of this meeting was voted by him on Friday.
Any public comments?
First up, we have Isabel Blair. She'll be speaking on information that she has raised.
Okay, Isabel, you would approach the podium and please state your names and what work is that.
My name is Isabel Blair. I don't give. Yes. Office. Four five. Um. I saw volunteering at Sunshine House. In Sunshine House. What's going to be? Films or shoot more what what we do and. Take care of. Some of those vulnerable, you know. So I hope they can also. Eight hundred and forty four. Now it's a very. Patient. She runs a tattoo. But it takes everybody as as saying notes, so.
City Secretary, any more comments?
And lastly, we do have Michael Wallen. Four or five commenting on item eight two.
Mr. Wallace, please state your name toward.
My name is Mike Wallace. I'm presiding for five. Um, first, I'm just confused. I'm here to speak about Sunshine House, but I was told. And that caring would speak and then for five minutes or four minutes and then. We could speak afterwards. Is that the way it works or should I speak now or ever?
Well, you have two choices. You can speak during the public comment portion just now. Or you can, there's a little box to check on come.
I did that.
Choose to speak here for discussion item. Do you remember which one to check?
Yeah, eight, eight point two or eight.
We can check the public comments. Oh, comment now.
Oh, I'm all for this Sunshine House, but I would rather speak and carry.
Okay.
Great thing.
All right, City Secretary, any other comments?
No, that's completely covered.
Okay, thank you. There's not any presentations, recommendations, or proclamations. So moving on to reports. City Secretary, please put six minutes on the timer. Hey, first up, I just wanted to utterly know what's going on with zoning and planning, which is the board commission that I'm sitting on. Right now, we're looking at a sign ordinance and looking at trying to clean up sites that are around town that are no longer functional. Uh, used. They spent the majority of the last meeting discussing this, so they're working towards it as well as still continuing to work towards a historic district overlay. And those are just two main things they're doing. They've also gone through. A lot of records, finding all the ordinances, things that may have included zoning changes. So they're trying to make sure that everybody's up to date on that. And then the other, I just want to remind everyone that the city secretary has put together a great presentation. That we're going to teach on Thursday, August seventeenth at five thirty. It's a thirty minute course from what city government one oh one. Just to introduce you to some of the things that the city has to abide by, follow. So that's coming up. All right, next up, we have the city attorney report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marianella Joseph from the Boher Quest Law Firm. Um, so as an update for our legal matters, we have a list of things that we're working on for all of you guys. So is the AP franchise agreement. Uh, the old house lease agreement, um, service contract for Big Ben Concrete. Um, a resolution to convey Coventry property. Uh, we're working on a draft neighborhood center lease, a review of your short term rental regulations. I gave you an update before. Uh, Texas disposal services agreement, uh, well negotiations. Uh, we have plenty in zoning questions that are ongoing and surplus of real property disposal policy. And airport CVP lease. And we have to that tonight. We have an executive session, so we can talk about all this in more detail then.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay, moving on, City Manager.
Okay, it's been kind of busy. Um, going back to the issues we had last month with the water, um, I wanted to bring you some more information. I wanted to give a shout out to Lane Siffity actually helping us try to compile all of our data. And then locked the spreadsheet so no one could mess with the formulas. Um, the formulas are kind of intriguing as I go through it. Um, because he did use a lot of AI. Because every time we have a meter roll over, doesn't necessarily mean it's adding a digit. We learn a lot. Uh, but he's been very gracious in helping us and he wants to continue to help us as as time allows. Um, another shout out to him is he's also kind of providing us some inside information in regards to some of the grants coming up for law enforcement. Apparently, there are some trainings being offered in other areas of Texas that are interesting and so these kind of things that are addressed as well. So last month, we had some issues in the Sunny Glen area. Um, I know it's really hard to look at the city from a whole perspective when it comes to water usage. Our conservation, our contingency plan doesn't allow us to to pinpoint specific areas. And Sunny Glen services the west, south, and east or north side of town. Um, it is considered one of four pressure planes within our city. So in about the middle of the June, middle of June, um, we started having issues with our equipment. One of the reasons we went to the contingency plan is because we couldn't maintain the water level to meet the demand to be able to to keep moving forward. Um, we looked at it from every area before we even made that decision. Um, I had all of the employees pulled off of any and all projects. And we were running around town looking for any and all possible water leaks. Um, we were addressing people watering the sidewalk. Um, looking at anything and everything. I personally was hoping to find a lake out in the Sunny Glen area, and that would have been our solution. Um, it came back, uh, that one of our wells, Robert Three, which is our biggest well producer in that area. Was operating at a much, much lower gallons per minute. Um, than had anticipated. It was operating below three hundred. It's supposed to operate about three twenty five. And so it wasn't pulling the water. It should have been pulling. Um, we were also concerned when we didn't know how long that had been happening. Um, so we've all talked about some internal flow test procedures to make sure our flows, our flow is being maintained. Um, the reason, another reason why our SCADA system, when we set all of our points on our SCADA system. What we call, you know, automatic, automated, there's levels. Once it drops below that level, and I will have to be manually blood. So because we couldn't keep our storage tanks at the levels in order to be maintained by SCADA. It was all being maintained manually by two employees, um, twenty four seven. Basically, every thirty to forty five minutes, every hour, they were having to go on and turn the strip on and off to lose the water back. When I took all of the information, um, just to give you guys a rough estimate. For the whole entire city for the month of June, we pulled thirty nine million, two hundred and ninety eight thousand, two hundred and fifty five gallons from the ground. So that is coming from all of the wells and the meters and that we have in one month. The Sunny Glen section. If running at full capacity twenty four seven, no rest for any of the wells and pumps out there. Technically should pull twenty eight million, eighty thousand gallons. We know for a fact we don't run twenty four seven. And we really can't. We have to let each pump kind of have a break. So we estimated that we run each pump about twenty hours a day, which would bring in twenty three million, four hundred thousand gallons. Just in the Sunny Glen area. The Sunny Glen area is comprised of Cherry Two, Roberts One, Roberts Three, Roberts Five, and Gardner, five wells. In June, that area pulled out seventeen million, nine hundred and thirty three thousand, eight hundred. Seventeen million, nine hundred and thirty three thousand, eight hundred dollars. So we knew we weren't pulling out what we should have been pulling out at the end of the year. Um, we have now since then gotten our tank levels situated. We've got it back to where we need to be. Um, the rain is more, it's wonderful. We love it. Um, and we are looking at pulling the contingency. Um, from non or from voluntary to back to normal. Um, the only thing that we are recommending moving forward is updating our ordinance and contingency plan to reflect more accurate information. Um, and to consider a watering structure to aid in conservation needs. So one of the biggest things that would feedback to me that passed a couple of months has been, well, so and so's watering. So and so's watering the street. Um, it is kind of an issue. We do live in West Texas. This situation isn't over. We know that we have something going on in that area. Um, we do have issues with one of the storage tanks. So we've reached out to our engineers to kind of help guide us from basically the wells. All the way to our customer side. So, um, we are working with them once provide all current data collection and known discrepancies. So we are looking for the discrepancies that we know for sure. Um, that would be.
Show format.
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, cut me off. Um, that would be pure tank. Um, your tank cannot maintain its water levels, so that was one extra source so that we don't see the old tap. And we're also looking at each of the wells to make sure that they are properly providing the gallons per minute as indicated. Um, we showed three twenty five for Roberts, I've been told three fifty, I've been told three hundred. Um, I believe currently Robert is three hundred fifty. And then. Working back with them to kind of say, we have an issue. There are a crank in the system. Um, so that is already underway so that we can move forward. I haven't received the lies to see if there have been any change in the water usage. Once I get those numbers in, I'll be back. This time last year, and we can tell you right now that the data is absolutely wrong. The city used an average consumption of three million, two hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy. And so it's sitting down training our staff when they're collecting those three thousand, they will. But they. As well. Is showing. We know we got an issue. Um, so good and bad, um, we we are monitoring that area still. We're not currently worried about the other side, but unfortunately during that. Very. It was a little short of those four steps for. Um, another engineering thing that we've been working on is the feasibility study of why to do a pre-update. They are preparing to file a report to the council. The short version answer is the new subdivision cannot disturb without. They will try to recoup the patient. And I thought that was. We're worried about the pressure on that side. Um, the sixty, the city has been given a six day trial legalization of the ERSI, our GIA system. See how capable we are to use the system without asking for additional assistance from them as a profit. Can we upload our information? Can we interpret it? Do we know how to use it? We're kind of excited about that. We do have one employee who is dedicating their time. To learn this system, to the systems of the law and copper side of it. Um, we're just kind of excited to show to be honest. Um, we are starting more of the letting copper especially with training. And we're providing staff identification training so that they can actually know what, when they see something, be able to tell what it is. Cat, iron, blood, copper. You would think some of that would be completed over the years of this. Change. And so we're looking forward to that. We have started on the north side of town and working our way back this way. Um, as we're doing meter change, we're replacing curb slots. We're observing both sides. What facilities can I get to look also? Building standards met July twenty sixth. They have issued an order to the Mollage for property at twelve oh three Avenue H. The property owner has forty five days to comply from July twenty sixth. If not compliant, the city will come in and abolish the property and file. On. Uh, the streets. James said this morning, um, they're prepared to prep several blocks start of facility. Um, the rain does kind of set them back a little bit. Their first path will be north on from Highway ninety to West to Baldi. The second path will be West Avenue G from North Gate to North Eleven. And this is just the first, and they have about fifteen more blocks to add. Um, the street map on the city website is being updated. I spoke with the director in systems this morning. They're going to go and get that. Set up. And of course, the rain is. And I can. Okay. Thank you, Senator. All right, so we're moving on to city staff updates. Sweet work.
You're going to announce.
Hello.
Here's your agent.
Yeah.
Uh, I have my reliable. Court clerk to this. Yeah. I don't want.
Slide that shows April fifteen. Red. District. Twelve was, um, twenty thousand, nine eighty six and two. We kept twelve thousand, it was fifteen thousand, nine twenty seven and four in state, uh, twelve thousand, fifteen. Uh, the next slide shows the. That just in a bar graph on the CD of these years. There to each month. Dude was down because that was a very. Slow month for citations. I was doing a lot of study for training. It did not have as busy in the courtroom because. It's. So that's why that shows it's a little less. Uh, the cases in court on the next sheet does reflect that. If you can look at April, May, and June. The disposed cases were a lot lower in June than April and early. Do you have that in your packets?
We do, so.
I want to make sure you can see and can everyone else see the numbers up there? Do I need to spell them out? We're good. And we're good. Yeah, thank you.
So what case low were you trying to get down? You know, my experience, it's always been kind of in seven, eight hundred range. Uh, you know, they're only good for two years. Like this way, we're not going to get ever cleaned up, so we ended up with cases that's getting flushed out.
Oh, I.
I I I know your work is terrible. I'm just trying to understand, what's the strategy to get numbers down? If you're only dispositioning this much, you're seven, eight, four, now you're down to seven sixty seven. What's the case backlog in terms of years and we have an issue? What do you do to your statute of limitations on you?
Well, yes.
So.
Jared. Like, what I do is just reschedule them when they don't show up.
Yep.
Then reschedule again. They get a failure to appear. Then if they don't show or pay that in a couple of weeks, we issue a warrant. And then I don't know how to tell you the answer to that. People just don't show up.
Oh, I know. I'm not counsel. I'm just trying.
And I don't really have a strategy for it. I'm just dealing with what I've got. And I I have no way to control that. Um, do you have some creative ideas?
Well, all I know, there was a period of time in the city where you just didn't show up, never paid anything. You got away with one.
Well, I know last February, no, this past February, we did write off some, but they were really old. They were way past two years. So I've been going back through the files, pulling out the older ones.
Then you can do the warrant roundup.
Yeah, I have stats right now. Um, in the process of giving a spreadsheet for capius pro funds for people that have been before the judge have gotten sentenced, have been given penalties and still don't. Do, and then we've done, um, installment agreement plans. That doesn't work. We do community service. That doesn't work. So we have capius profiles out to those folks, so I have quite a large stack working for our next roundup, which is in September.
You use Omni base.
Yes.
So it gets you four states and it's.
And that's an incentive, but only when they renew their license. Some of them don't even care if they have a license.
Yeah, and license is not in a lot like seven years.
So that is a big emphasis for them. I I don't know.
I'll I'll stop by and see you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, any other questions on that? And then the dismissals in April. They weren't that many at trial. Because they don't come to trial. Uh, a lot of them, as you'll see, applies dismissals, they'll just pay in advance. You know, they'll call and make a bet. And, uh, pretrial dispositions. Um, I guess they're up there, but warrants at trial, if they came to trial, they would be more.
Have there been any issues with the city attorney not actually being able to be here and operating? Getting things that aren't required to.
I was going to get into that at the end, but no. Um, it's been, we've been working well together. He's brought up a lot of things that we were not doing for that need to be done. As far as legal. The top is it. Uh, the person before me, who was only in one visit, she brought through, I didn't know that. Uh, before that, I don't know what happened. But he's reviewing and helping teach me in a good way of how to do things correctly.
So are I able to dispose of cases, have they provided like information on this certain case you can dispose right fine or something like that?
We have standing orders. And those have been in effect. Then Judge Valenzuela has reviewed them, vulnerable, signed off on them. As well as the city secretary. So certain things like they want to pay before. You know, coming to court, we just pay it. They want to take driver safety and they're eligible. They're welcome to do that. If they want to come to court, talk with the prosecutor, talk with the judge, they can work out, work out a confirmed disposition for a pretrial deferment. And they always have the option of evidence trial. So, yes, they should hear you all for it. Um, anything else on that?
Hey, I'd like to add something about there's, in some cases, not very many, but. More than I would like to see. Uh, there's some individuals that are incarcerated, so when they're incarcerated, they can. So we use that as time served and. It's missed. It's the. The habit of a human being. Wait.
Um, then the last page is just an overview. We have a roundup coming up on September fourteen. And I'm going to a conference in Georgetown in October, November. I just took my municipal course in, cast it, and now I'm certified for. Before. He ends CC one. So I'm very proud of that job for the book. Um, our calendar has been set for twenty twenty three, twenty four. It's on the next page for our dates. And, um, the last is the two new prosecutors, uh, Mr. Christopher Gadd and his daughter. They work for the.
Let's see, what's.
Burka's Whopper in El Paso. I've been on the phone with a lot of them. He's sending them ten plates for citations and spending a lot of help. And just solidifying things that we need to be doing. And which is great, isn't it? Someone would do a good job. No, we shouldn't.
Excited to be seeing you turn in.
Yeah. Yeah, they're.
I will work to.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, I know.
Sir, man. Or I appreciate you. And come on, see.
Okay, we're moving on to public hearing. I'll be right here. We want to speak regarding a public hearing and council and our comments. All right, so public hearing and we want a public hearing to take this abuse and comments regarding special use permit in twenty twenty three dash oh eight dash oh one. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at four oh five North Ninth Street. The property owner of record is Christopher Jacob. The partial ID of the subject property is one point nine seven four. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's agenda contains five items. I have one approval of July twenty twenty three regular minutes. Item two, approval of the. July eighth twenty twenty three. Item three, approval of the amended fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Item four, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And item five, approval of special use permit twenty twenty three dash zero eight dash zero one. Short term rental special use permit allowing short term to be established at four oh five North Ninth Street. Property owner of record is Christopher Jacob. Partial ID of the property is one one nine.
Secretary, I'd like to remove number four or discussion. Looking at ten agenda items, one, two, three, and five. So one, two, three, and five. Do I have a motion for one, two, three, and five? Second. Hey, let's vote. All in favor of one, two, three, and five, raise your right hand. Pass as you need it, please. Okay, so, um, item number four, I just wanted to talk with the council to see if we will have a. Uh, forum on that day. It's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. I'm not sure if. That would be looking. Yeah, if you guys are competing town, we would have a forum. So that's just a little touch base. We had to tell, I'll be out. I'm. I'm trying. I'll try. Like. Okay, so that's all I wanted to just deal with that one. And so I need a motion to approve that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
She wrote out some asked.
Okay.
For this there is a last. Yes. That's not important. So. And on this.
So do I have a second to approve the movement that the committee to the calendar for quarterly with dates? Say, segment. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, so the amendment passes and let's move back to the original item. Uh, for approval of this year twenty twenty three for city meeting calendar as recommended. All in favor, raise your right hand. As you need it, please. All right. Did that take us to information or discussion item, City Manager, number one. Part of our three four update by the chair of the board. Don't be nervous.
The only difference is.
Now, Sarah, it's never nerves.
Councilor, Secretary. I was asked a city woman here to have turned on this for three, review and streamline, and guidelines put in place. For the page if you have, I was told to do part rules. I have a draft to put into the board next week at our board meeting. Festivals and event planning, unfortunately, this gentleman resigned. So I'll have to reassign that to someone else to get his notes. Riddle piece. Darren was working on that with the board, and E and N are. I'm going to do something about utility donation. Park, park organization. That was Andy, Andy has signed his desk, it's still ongoing. Haven't heard any. The one true gem of this whole report would be inventory and playground equipment. K K Santos excellent job of this, including where repairs would be needed. It's mostly just painting and things like that, although a caterpillar head was stolen, I don't know how we're gonna get that. Again, the possibility to involve donation. I think it's a great idea, instead of putting it on there and asking to opt out, it's a very good idea, ask to stop the ads, so. I think that went down. Park activities. Uh, we've been member, we've been short two members since I've been on the board. If we had no one to do this, I'm gonna have to assign this in the next board meeting. As long, along the reports, like updates to board activities each corner and one with the city staff. I realize it's a very leading report. You have any questions? This is one. Now they've been assigned. We are shorts. Gotcha. So I should have two members, two new members at the next board meeting, however, we're still gonna be this one. Because. So, something, sorry. I think we, we have to, I guess we'll be able to pick replacements, so this provides clarification, there's. Even though we'll have two more members. Exactly, exactly. I appreciate it. If you know anybody, please put their name up consideration and. I'll help you.
Actually, I have.
What's the name of the board next time?
Thank you, and thank all your work for your service.
Thank you, you're welcome.
All right, item number two, Sunshine House presentation by Executive Director Carrie Nance. Discussion, Observatory Cities for. Thank Carrie.
Thanks, I am the Executive Director at Sunshine House. We are senior, also those provider for Alwin. And we've been providing meals since nineteen seventy-eight. Currently, we do a grant, maybe in the state, we have kitchen. We have four people that have everything, seal everything. Volunteers that get out, join our homebound seniors, disabled. So we are attracted to over sixty-five thousand. As you guys know, the population can outline staging. Uh, so we have more and more people turning over sixty, which is soon served. Uh, constantly, uh, we also had a big job during COVID. While a lot of people became homeless, they were elderly. We've had another big jump of people getting on the meals program because the staff and kids getting fed with COVID. And unfortunately for our seniors who are fixing, they can't really make it. They can make less sometimes. Some of their things left. So we're getting quite a lot more defiance. Not only do we do the meals, we do welfare checks. Uh, we save two lives this year alone, every year we save several lives. A lot of times, our volunteer is the only person that the elderly person might see all day, sometimes all week. Um, so the last time we saved a life was during the summer and the heat. Uh, someone had become dehydrated, their kidneys shut down, and they couldn't get out of court. Our volunteer called the ambulance and sent you, but I made it, and back to another two hours. So we do serve a very important role, other than just meals. But one of the most important things that we do, and we have a logic model somewhere, uh, is we try to keep the seniors in their homes. If they don't have food, if they don't have a lot of different things, or a big part of that, but not everything. They have to go away to Ukraine, to the nursing home, or forced off to dinner elsewhere. And they are no longer in Alpine at all, if we can't keep them there. So that's a big part of what we do. If these people are displaced, they lose their community, and we lose that, we lose everything about that. So our mission is to provide quality nourishment, social enrichment, for lives of seniors who home down in disabled in Alpine, America, Texas. We have twenty-five clinics in America. We have three out in Sunny Glen, uh, outside of City Government, I believe. And then we have around two hundred and twenty-five within City Government. Uh, some of those are congregants that come in, um, about two hundred meals go out every day, about eighty-one thirty to sixty people, depending upon the day, the weather, everything. Come in to eat in Sunshine House. So we are reaching out to the city to help us pay our gas and water bill. Uh, I did not want to ask you guys for a grant, because I know that there are city things that need lots of money. I don't know how much it cost the city to run gas and water. But I do know, um, if we didn't have to pay it, we could produce over a thousand more meals and get these out, and we are growing that need. So I am asking for your support to help us give seniors a home, to keep them nourished, and to help our community. Any questions, Council?
So how much is the gas and water bill?
Combined, uh, together, they're a little over seven thousand, that's three twenty. Is what we're, we're on for this fiscal year, which is, it actually took the rest.
County providers for Sunshine House?
They do, um, they give us a county grant, it's fifteen hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
So.
Eighteen thousand nine hundred. Yes, and they have been continually for a very long time.
People are buying meals five days a week.
Five days a week. Yes. Yeah, we have a wonderful, and this weekend, gave me for our gas and water, of course, in one year, but they haven't last.
And the city did that because you're on a city.
Questions?
Want to move back in and front again?
Yeah, we all out here. You know, we have a fire exercise program, it's getting really big, and we have stretched out, wacking each other. And we have, uh, for the first time over the summer, had a wait for like a restaurant. So, yeah, we, we can stand up or. You guys do provide this service. Thank you. We do our very best, um, you know, these are the people they raised up and how they're stuck, so, um, they get so right, thanks to you. All right, anything else? Yes, yes. Thank you.
Remember that something good far in line. Oh, Marty, were you gonna say something, I'm so sorry.
In the driver, we deliver to men, you see a paid driver or volunteer.
Marathon is a paid. Right, all the rest are volunteers.
I just want to add to what Carrie said. We serve the people who, in a lot of cases, are on the margins of society. Here, and a lot of them are not seen because they can't get out of their phones. And, um, in addition to bringing meals every day, we also pack up a meal each day for the weekend. For, uh, people, so they have something to eat all the time. In addition, what attracts me to Sunshine House is the mission about feeding the hungry. Uh, we don't limit people because of their age. If someone comes into Sunshine House, or we find out that there's a need, then we work to fulfill them. Um, so it's, it's a wide-reaching. I would call it ministry, because that's where I come from, but, um, it's a wide-reaching ministry that, uh, people who we serve have served this city for years. And I think it's something, the more we are able to, to appreciate them by serving them, I think the better off everybody is. So I appreciate you at least taking into account, um, of possibilities of supporting us. Way with the gas one, thank you.
Okay, moving on to information discussion, item number three, City Manager. Property tax rate, a free value of tax law. Um, in your packets, what's the information that was provided by the average district? Um, July, like we said. Um, I repeat the certified tax rule on July thirty-first. Um, we have currently two hundred and seventeen accounts under protest at the time of this new. Um, that has changed because they're still having ongoing hearings. And the estimated values for, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, reflects five hundred and fifty million, four hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight. The final Australian values with growth protest for twenty twenty-three reflects four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. Sorry, guys, four hundred, I have those numbers all wrong. Four hundred and ninety-seven, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. Um, in twenty twenty-two, um, the certified values were four hundred and thirty-seven million, one hundred and seventeen, two thousand, six hundred and three. Which shows you an increased value of sixty million, seven hundred and four thousand, fifty-nine dollars. The total of new taxable property is two million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five. What's important to know, um, this is the first time we've actually had protests within our certified values in tax law. Currently, at the time of this report, those under review was seventy-one million, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. The city does what we call truth in taxation in order to determine our tax rate before. Um, the state has changed that formula in that report. Did a ten-page, itemized report of a breakdown of everything that the little plan to create values. Um, very, the whole section based off of the protest and was under review. For our purposes, in order to move forward with determining our tax rate, these will be joined by the report and the certified capital that was provided. Um, with the current seventy-one million in protests. Uh, when I spoke to the niece, she is providing the regular updates as they go through in their outlook protest. To show you how the values are changing, who we can go day to day changing how we're gonna do our tax. Uh, it's just really not functional. And so these are the numbers that we will move forward with for the purpose of, uh, determining our tax rate for the sixty million. So the sixty million is what would be in addition, this is where we break the values from last year to this year. So currently, the protests have gone down, um, but since she's having more and more meetings, I'm more than happy to share those reports with you for tax services for the tax. Um, I know Darren's got some comments he wants to make in regards to this. I just wanted to get the information out to you, so we can start the tax rate. See where we're at, um, we do have a lovely increase in our grade values, which does help. Um, but that protest. So, once I figure out everything. Um, there was, I had to wait for some reports. Um, in order to start the sheet, I had to have the first one, which is the current twenty-two of free values. Um, which do change throughout the year, so that we start to start to actively look.
The one thing, uh, that I was gonna mention, my last detailed data was that there's seventy-one million in the protest. And forty-one million, that's about sixty percent of our total. And so, and when you look at the interesting part about all these properties, is there's three hundred and seven totals in, I guess, our taxable area. And, uh, protests for forty-seven. We're looking at small bunch of numbers, but if you look at the total, there's three hundred and seven properties for a total of one hundred and two million dollar market value. The protest for thirty-seven is to have the three hundred and seven, the market value forty-one. So all properties that are protesting are high-value properties. So twelve percent of all properties were actually protesting, this is the actual site, it's a very high. They've got probably very similar to those info areas as well. Higher value property. Which on those people protest, that over the value of those.
Well, and if anyone is questioning, it's the last page, and what was available. Comments? I don't know if she's doing like all the city council or marathon. Um, I know we have the two hundred and seventeen, as we actually have one hundred and ninety-nine. And so they are across the list. She had a little first house. So I don't know how they're sketching.
Just looking at the protest values. Implications of cities of three hundred thousand, policy of taxes. So the thing about our tax rate, get in, two hundred bucks. They would increase value, so we're gonna be in a battle of two million. This potential, you have the three hundred thousand, that's. Homestead Act, so a question I have, so what the information, you know, on the homestead properties that are in Alpine.
Does provide the benefit to break it out. Everyone's asking about the homestead, it's full pass. So this full tax, so that's just with full tax, because it's a big, like, it doesn't tax. Um, we do have a lot of homestead.
Okay, that will just. So that helps a lot. Bottom line. Bottom line.
And you should buy them have an estimated breakdown of country. Um I'm working with. Verified back and forth, and it's always moving the county marathon. So it's a lot of things that's on my advice. You have to add in five or so. Don't have any.
So on that, then at the next meeting, we'll get the tax rate.
Yes, so the way we're happy to break it down now, the biggest change in the truth with taxation form is the incremental. So because we're allowed to kind of save our three percent for so many years and then apply it all at once. Um there's a whole new calculation for that and it's kind of thrown all of us off. So you'll get the no new revenue, which prior was called effective. So that's the baseline to collect the same as we collected last year. And you'll get the incremental, you'll get the voter vote, you have to go up to vote, collect three and a half. And then over there. And then you get the minutes, which would be if the city wanted to bring in a flat of five hundred thousand.
Very clarification on bank rates.
That's the part we're trying to figure out. Because we did use first of last year that we put the one percent and we give the three three one. Um we're all kind of working back and forth. Is this correct? Is this correct? Um it lays out a lot of things, but then it has the little asterisk where it says see tax. Moving on to discussion item number four, city manager. So after the last meeting, um the session, we're continued. Um we were very impactful and provided additional information. And before I threw another draft of the budget, I wanted to get everyone's input. Um it does take a little bit of time working between different, so. For achieving more folks in fact, for sure. So I wanted to cover everything, make all of the adjustments and changes and additions and then present to the first draft of the first. Um I outlined in the background, all of the things that were discussed and questioned and what we wanted to add and subtract. Um but I also wanted to give you as a budget for a couple of weeks now. You had time to some additional information. So currently the items that are being added, changed, um removed um from the current draft budget. Uh is the increased top funds. Um that was part of the last or the last staff meeting where we added additional. Um which was approved by council. And there's also discussion going ahead and adding uh additional funds for block or employee structure assistance. Those who come out of the reserves for digital fund. Get the city going. Um additional clarification and money app amounts for the capital assets for the capital improvement plan that are actually being proposed, proposed in twenty three, twenty four budget. Um additional clarification in the summary sheet of the fund balance in that position for all of the funds. So if you need those before every one of them. Be most well um help. Additional clarification of the available reserves and an outline of how they are being used. Um that's just another summary case shows where that the budget is supposed to be before. And how the council basically had. Clarification or department priority projects can be found with department budget expenses. That's providing the line item to information show that is actually included, is actually included. Um so that not only can public see, this is what we want to do. Council can obviously just where we're at. Um additional list of risks and unknowns um that we may encounter. Uh one of the first ones we will be, we will have to make one of the patients to put forward. Um already on my list, this just confirmed it, but we're not just unknown, but it is a list. Um and then any additional recommendations from tonight um that we can add or you guys can think of. Um I'd like to be able to get everything, so moving to another draft for Monday. So you have another week to review for the first reading. Sounds great. Were there any thoughts, anything you guys could think of in the session? We were looking through it at night if you were. Sounds good.
So my granddad. Two nine year old. I I I think you've done good with what you have before. I hope everybody realized we can get a big landfall of money. So it's the same exact money that being redistributed. And it's making a job to figure out where he's gonna put all of it. And our job is pretty good. Maybe make those numbers work. I'm fine. I said that last time. I'm not an accountant, so I can work at it all day. But give one.
That's my thanks, mate. Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you.
That's next.
There's another verification that we're not spending money on streets this year, uh so that frees up some money in the budget. I do think that. Are important thing. And they have to make the purchase the same other thing. It's not just the sum of money that they have this year, they can make it happen. We can sustain the system.
He just said something, a master question, and that wasn't the last week. Uh you said that uh since we won't be doing streets, so that money is not being saved for next year.
We are doing, uh I have a hard time with this. We are doing streets. There's a million dollars allocated streets.
We're not third partying.
We're not third party, so we gotta really help our residents because I get lots of, whatever we're stopping the streets. We're spending a million dollars on streets this year, we're continuing on, so.
We need that we make out the third party. We're not saving the for a niche. We're not saving, but we're not using what it's certainly. So we still have a small bit of money that's in reserves for third party hiring. What I really want council and the public also to understand that this is a living document, it changes. So on the first meeting in October, you guys came to me and say I'm have an ordinance and I want to change the budget. You can do that. Um I know that there's a session about, well, you know, our policy says that we'll put money to reserves. Um I had indicated we're not, but in February, if I come in and say, hey, you know, we've had some cutbacks, we haven't had to use so much. We've got some money that's put it in reserve, then we do that. Um this document really should go back and forth. So this year, the staff has done really good about, you know, what are our priorities, what are our needs? And not, you know, which is supposed to. Councilmember Nancy. Was it? Okay, councilmembers and doctors.
When will the next draft be available?
Monday.
One.
And I will email it and then it will also be put online for the. So the original has been filed with the city and it is available online. And then we'll put the second amendment, our second draft, uh because it should constantly change and we want the public to see that. Councilmember Stevens.
Uh so what I'll thank Megan for working. We spent a fair amount of time, I don't know, this time we spent at the last meeting, at the un meeting.
Yeah.
We wanted a lot of questions that Megan submitted and that. All of the things that I had asked for, Megan's got incorporated here. Employee salaries and board, the budget does grow seven and a half percent, fifty point four and sixty point two million dollars. So it's a sizable increase, but that's covered by the uh federal funding and a million of that drawn towards our treatment. So it's great to see that, so we get clearly clarify number one, take care of. And the other thing and. Megan has on top here, employee restructure assistance. Megan did put the budget throughout the. I'm concerned about employee retention, it's a big element. We gotta get that worked sooner because we have a lot, when people leave. They take a lot of knowledge with them, so Megan worked hard to make sure she got the money in there to work employee restructure assistance. So I suggested she has some dollars in that what that could send, she's got the flexibility to. So we're not the place where people take employees from. We're the place people want to come to work, because they know it can be well taken care of on my side and on the leadership side. Uh and the the whole ocean, uh and we'll talk about it the next item, lots of workshops we've had. But the one item I would like to bring up is Sunshine House. I'm looking for some eight thousand dollars. I think we want to support that. Uh it's the council or councils, so Jay rarely, if not, I'll take the three thousand dollars we're allocated for five and allocate to Sunshine House. I think it's that important to do, but I think that'll be the one item. We just have to say, she will say, hey Megan, two hundred and eighty thousand in Sunshine House. First, I agree with your point, which would be important one. I just, when I did the math, I wasn't so, it brought me two hundred and fifty uh our elderly. Now, my mom's ninety two, fortunately she still drives, so she'll be honest, stay up close and mom driving. Uh she's still, you know, living mobile, able to take care of herself. But those who are living on fixed incomes are really struggling and when you do the math about the homes they live in Alpine. They bring in a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in cash revenue to the city of Alpine. So my view is given the longevity here, I can say it's the way that you want to stay with those who have been here and uh and help bring all of us here.
I agree. I agree. Okay, so that takes us to information discussion item number five. Councilmember Stevens.
So uh I put this on the item as we're thinking about our agenda, items coming up here, I want to. How it's far as it's a fairly efficient place. I do think there are. Four major items that consistent with cities teaching purpose. Four areas. It's worthwhile. Workshops, I ask. We had some workshops. Megan and or members who could explain this or not, for example. Water production. You know, I looked at the map, uh as Megan was kind of walking through the numbers. Based upon these numbers, Robert's number three is delivering thirty three percent of the water in the city. And many of our back question is, well, our numbers aren't all that good. In my view, it's worthwhile for us as council. The residents be on speed on where our wants to match is. And the opportunities are and what we should do proactively to go. I think the budget's done a nice job, and uh took the students to get a little bit of fun here. We need several workshops. Voice margin, we plan. Uh we'll put a million dollars into it next year. If I look at a visual success, if you get two hundred thousand gallons of rainwater or groundwater, whatever you want to use. That's up with the Pearl's and Manis today, present in Saros. They would love to do the piping, unnecessary to use food water to water rods. Rather than. They can see sixty five billion gallons of water here in some of us. So they would love to. Of course, it's the water issue. That we want, I saw a part of that burger as well, we want to. Uh I think that there's a lot to be there. Cruz has a terrific job. Megan's got a. I think on roads, we talked about, should we or should we not pay roads or not? That's a really important question. In order to do that, when we look at the capital, people think it helps last meeting. There's a ton of dollars we need to go spend to be able to go do that. I think we just give the cost analysis, you see the right thing or not. Uh and I think the other question we guess I'd ask ourselves is, what should I base my, should we do chip seal or I? And I think there are some roads, chip seals fine. There are some roads, high traffic, once capable of scootings, a lot probably ought to be a hotness. Uh but I think we need a workshop and have any expertise and all that kind of things. Here's what we recommend. And we can why it's then decide if we don't spend the money or not. Uh business and. Then we're not buying it, and I think we need to make those decisions. If we do chip seal, we have a much better bank, but I just think it's a problem. And then as Megan's already shared, the uh employee benefits, uh there's a baseline plan. Megan is gonna be, I think, ready, I'll be in here to come back with spots. Uh and I think we will understand. We are the city where. Where employees want to come to work. Those uh rather. I'm proposing the bigger out of the hotels, the actual no, that would be putting as workshops. Uh let Megan put those on the table, I just write that's how long that I share that with everybody. Say, I think that makes sense, presumably they all read, you know, they say they're ready with that budget. Lots of sense.
I I think it's a good idea. I think that one, that is one of the problems. We sit here two hours, one person, I don't think that's. I don't know how you get them in here. I think you get more if we do it a single item at a turn.
I want to die, want to die.
But if we incorporate them in these meetings, this is what people listen, this. If you don't mind, oh, we're in here at three o'clock.
Karen does.
Karen, Karen, yeah. Yeah, I know I'll have one person. Sure. I'd like to do a big dedicated workshop for one person. With everyone's DM and Chris, did it on the day of a regular scheduled meeting. Four o'clock for one hour and had an.
So you're gonna bring the experts in, right? It's gonna be informational thing for the the public and. We're just gonna ride on us. Yes, I think that's. It is hard, yes.
It's part of all of our efforts, we gotta raise the top.
Now, when uh Jared stopped down, he talked to a guy. Buying equipment. For lease to buy, they train the guys down here. And and I mean, it was a, it was a win win situation for Al. Instead of paying, that's what this. And that's what we need. I'm not thinking. We need our own street. Put farm in the town and and then if somebody else is hard, that's what we do.
So the other side.
For bids.
So the other side is that is depending on the direction we go. Would really determine what equipment we need. So always to run that equipment, you may not need all the equipment, um and it's our partnership. We may be able to get the county to put this. So just some of the heavier. Is there a way maybe that we could put a poll or something on website? Find out what tie is best for us to the budget. I know people hate, I know people hate on a Saturday, but that might be what's best. You say, why you work Monday, Monday through Friday. I don't know. I mean, Councilmember Rogers, he says a good point. How many people work till five o'clock? You want you something? Yeah, I think. We can also set it up before we do the first hour, five thirty, thirty. That's what we did in the past. And we tried that. Other calls, councilman previous.
It worked.
I think that's good. Schedule those to make in October, November. Right. I'm all for information. Okay, all right, so at this time, we're gonna take a short five minute break until past hour mark. Be back to order. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're moving on to action items. Number one, City Manager. Actually, can I ask the council to go out of order and move item number five involving the E nine-one-one public safety to the first one? Do you have any people out of the hassle with the cause? It's, uh, it's any of you. That way, council goes, uh, questions, they are very important. So I need a motion from council. Need a second, okay? Okay, discussion. Vote on favor or reject. Okay, so let me, we put approving answer, let me know, maybe number five to the top. Next, number five is City Manager. Approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. E nine-one-one public safety answering point services in our local agreement between the city of Alpine and the Rio Grande Council of.
Good afternoon, City Council. This is Marisa Quintanilla, Regional Services Director for the Rio Grande Council of Governments. Requesting your approval, uh, to enter in.
Hold on. Sorry. We have had a motion.
So moved.
I need a second. Second, okay. All right, now discussion. Okay, go ahead now.
I apologize. I apologize. I, I'm ready to go. Ready to go. Um, requesting, uh, uh, council's approval on the inter-local agreement for our next biennium for our E nine-one-one public, public safety answering point, which is our PSAP there in Alpine. Um, this is an inter-local agreement that is renewed every biennium. And, uh, basically behind your agenda items, you should have a copy of the inter-local agreement. It just talks about, about our responsibility and also our partnership with the city of Alpine and city of Alpine Police Department in terms of that equipment that is located there, um, at the PSAP. Um, you know, you, you do have a scope of work in terms of what is our responsibility. And then also the expectations from, uh, the police department in terms of security breaches, do's and don'ts in terms of the equipment, uh, reporting incidents, uh, and, and how to mitigate those incidents. Uh, so there's no monetary, um, uh, engagement in this inter-local agreement. It's just outlining our, our partnership and then our roles and responsibilities.
Questions? So?
Has there ever been an issue?
Uh, no, there hasn't been. Um, the only thing is that when we just update of the method of reporting incidents, like for example, uh, prior to February fourteenth of twenty twenty-two, we had a different vendor. So the reporting for any troubleshooting, uh, you know, e- equipment failures or anything like that was reported to a different, uh, type of customer service where now we're with the carbine Apex solution. So that reporting's a little bit different. So it's outlined in the, in the scope, uh, in terms of, you know, who to contact and, and just delineating those responsibilities. But there's never been an issue. In turn, uh, many times when we retire the equipment, uh, for example, um, we're going to replace our UPS there at, at Alpine. Um, Chief LaSoya, uh, you know, I had asked if he wanted the, the other UPS so he can go ahead and tie in some of the radio equipment. So in case there is, uh, a power failure, he still has communications and so forth. So many of our, many times our equipment is transferred to the city of Alpine Police Department for y'alls to use. Since we do have a, uh, equipment maintenance replacement schedule, that equipment, like the UPS, is still good. And so if you all can benefit from it, absolutely, why not transfer, transfer ownership of that unit?
So in essence, we provide the equipment.
We do.
Niles nine-one-one, it goes to the one station.
Yes, sir.
Well, thanks.
They provide a hundred percent.
Yeah.
All right, so thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, let's vote on favor, reject, or ignore. Passage unanimously. So approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five E nine-one-one, but let's say we need to.
Thank you. Thank you. You all have a great evening. We'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, so action item number one. Approved Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash oh one. A resolution authorizing the renewal of the city of Alpine employee health insurance, dental insurance and vision insurance benefits for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Hey, I need a motion. I need a second. Discussion. Councilor Stevens?
Yeah, uh, so. I, I presume all of this is in the budget going forward, Megan?
Yes, so as part of the research and background to this, I got our insurance brokers to start working the numbers. Uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield came back with a five percent increase. Um, it was the lowest. Um, side note, we are fully funded. But we're no longer putting money aside to cover our own claims. Um, and then humanity came back with no changes. Um, so what is included in the resolution is the actual cost, um, the premiums for employee only. Um, employee and children, employee spouse and employee and family. Also included, um, in the resolution is a formal, um, agreeance of the city does cover a percentage of the dependent premium for children, spouse and family. So that's also included. We do not cover, uh, any of the dependent portion for, uh, vision and. Those two are the lowest out of all of them, but we can cover the health insurance. And this would be for one.
Uh, this is the resolution, so more thanks for, since you know the vision. Five dollars for the. So we're not doing. For the.
So the employee portion is a hundred percent covered by the city. So five dollars and fourteen cents is covered by the city. For the employee and spouse, the city covers five dollars and fourteen cents. And the, uh, employee is responsible for the other five dollars and fourteen.
Gotcha. Okay, so I just want to make sure.
Councilmember Simmons, okay?
So we should have different vendors, okay?
Not from our current year, no. These are the same vendors we're currently.
Okay.
This didn't change any of our, our current. Councilmember.
The only thing I thought was interesting on it was the, the cost. You know, when you calculate this out, that, that's about eight thousand, eleven thousand. I asked the.
Councilmember Roger. That is part of it. You and Megan, are you happy with insurance?
When I use it, yes.
All right, good. I have not, I love you sort of happy, yeah.
I haven't heard of it. I'm very happy with it.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote on favor, reject, or ignore. Hey, passage unanimously. Okay, moving on to action item number two, City Manager. Approved Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight dash zero two. A resolution authorizing the transfer of designated fire apparatuses, equipment and vehicle to Bridger County, Texas, as outlined under the inter-local agreement regarding firefighting and fire protection services in Alpine Emergency Services Board. Okay, I need a motion. I might move. I need a second. Any discussion? Any decision?
I, I.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens?
Well, I have a question. Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I, I provided you, and it's going to be very interesting. Um, what is provided under equipment is what we actually have listed in our asset system. So we, as a city, did not do very well with picking up with the assets prior to pretty much two thousand thirteen. A lot of what the fire department got was also under grants, um, not necessarily through the city, but through the county. So I'm literally cleaning out our asset system and transferring everything that's, um, there. On the vehicles, those are the vehicles, not only in our asset system, but that we actually have a physical title to. Um, we don't have titles to everything. Um, it's, you know, it's been ongoing for some time. Um, so we went through and we listed everything that we actually have a title to and we can tie back to the fire department. Um, historically, we had been asking for an inventory from the fire department since two thousand thirteen. Um, what we have is what we have each know over the years from people actually going out there. Um, there is one statement in there that I would like to have amended. Uh, once we transfer these effective today, the insurance will stop. Um, the county has already taken on the insurance. So. I'm sorry. So you would like to buy it to me? To state that, yes. Okay, all right, Councilmember Roger, it's. So there are vehicles that we aren't going to transfer? Yeah. Either are we transferring them, if you don't, are they just going to stay over there if they don't have a title? Um, they'll just stay over there if they don't have a title. The, the way the inter-local agreement reads is title or no title. This is what we're actually transferring. We are not transferring the antique engines.
And like a storm farm, where are we going to put?
Those are, I, we're already sold. They're not even at the fire.
So these are actual feet. You're seeing. We've seen these shit on this. If it says no top, y'all know that truck.
So we have verified with all of our lists, we know that the trailer is over there. I can't tell you what conditions in.
What we don't care about that.
And as we went through all of the records, we marked off the ones that had been sold in auction. Where we had some type of indication that there was the. Hey, Councilmember Stevens, you said you had a lot of questions.
I didn't have a lot of questions, but. Before I make that question, I'd like to make the amendment to the motion. That would passage the transfer of the passed the resolution and the date of effective transfer of the equipment. We cancel each policy association.
Awesome. You need more discussion before we vote? All right, so we have a second. Any discussion on the amendment? All right, let's vote on the amendment to rob the insurance effective the date of. On my favor, reject or ignore. Maybe amendment, passage unanimously. Now we need to vote on the resolution as.
You have a question.
Okay.
spoken last word. We find a truck. Is that going with him? And does it work?
Or no? I'm still, no, you can drive it.
You'll never be able to reach for ourselves, ever.
Okay.
The, the latter will only extend to a certain that it might be the worst or is a lesser, but you can.
You say you can have that so. One of the risks at some point, I'm sure the board, board, who's providing oversight is probably going to come back to both the county and the city and say, here's our recommendation as how we perceive, how we evaluate us.
That is a financial risk that we have not touched the money allocated. That is a financial risk that we have not touched the money allocated, it is still in reserve for the fire department for that.
That money stays with the city.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
No.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's vote on the resolution as intended, all in favor, I'll take your right hand. Alright, let's move on to the third action item, and this is also.
Approved Resolution twenty twenty three dash oh eight dash oh three. A resolution approving the renewal of the city's telecommunication and broadband contract with they've been.
Need a motion? I need a second. Okay, discussion please.
So is this a, is this an extension that existed with the existing five year contract that is involved?
So the first one was a five year. The loophole we found allowed for an extension, which was for three year. Then three year has an agreement for year to year. We're renewing for one year so that in early spring of next year, twenty twenty four. We will go back out for an R and P um to consider our telephone and broadband services. And that contract will go back to about a five.
Councilmember Sinatik? Councilmember Danz? Councilmember Rogers? Alright, let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passage unanimously. And moving on to action item number four, city manager.
Approved Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight dash zero four. A resolution approving the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Health reimbursement arrangement managed through total administrative services corporation.
Need a motion? I need a second. Any discussion?
So I'd like to give some background before you ask your questions. In fiscal year twenty twenty, the city made a lot of changes to our benefits offered to our employees. Um it was actually a perfect timing in light of what was going on. Um we initiated a HRA, which is the Health Reimbursement Agreement. Um to benefit the the employees. So prior to employee fully funded and all the changes we made. Uh the city was self insured, which meant we charged back ourselves a portion of money to put aside to cover our claims. So when an employee went to the doctor, um they paid the co-pay, but then we would actually pay the claim stuff. Up to thirty five thousand dollars. As part of the fully funded and the changes we made, um we increased some of our deductibles and our emergency room visits. Um we were still taking a proactive preventative approach, um but we also wanted to be able to afford being fully funded. So in twenty 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 one, we provided seven hundred and fifty dollars per rated per employee. So that means depending on when your insurance started, determine what you got. We don't ask the employees with the forces, we give them a tax card. That they can use to pay their co-pays, that they can use to cover incidental. Um including up to travel reimbursements to and from a doctor's visits. Um it's a little something extra to help them. Um currently, we probably have about sixty percent of our employees utilizing it. These funds are coming out of that account that we had ourselves funded. So there's still a balance in there, and that's what we're utilizing. Um we do pay a premium for employee, um it's about four dollars a month for each employee. And then the system manages it all for us. Um so they get the card, they go out, they can use it for prescriptions and anything. So this is an additional benefit. So this year, we're recommending what we've recommended the past two years.
Councilmember Stevens?
They're gone, so as of September thirtieth, whatever has not been extended, because it's not their money. So we're paying for the actual. We're not giving the employee five hundred bucks and they just build it up, um they cut off the. It would be many towards, say, expenses to doctors and events. So the company that we go through actually did all of the verification with receipts and they compare it to. You know, your doctor's appointments, that's all done in terms of which reimbursement. So they have the card that they can use for actual like prescriptions, you know, any of the prescription stores and swipe it. You can go to Walmart and swipe it for certain things, candy, cops or, I don't know. Um for the travel, it actually has to be a reimbursement.
Councilmember Danz?
The only thing I would ask is, you said sixty percent of people actually use this, the other forty down?
It's not that they don't, um we had a cleanup last week. Internal error on my fault, or my bad. Uh click in the box. Um and so they're all getting huge. In the, or the cards are all being filled out, so all the employees can go back. And actually replace those reimbursements for fighter, they're all getting a card that's properly on the floor.
I guess my question would be, you're gonna be younger, do they utilize it?
Several of them, yes.
I think there's no other options than we offer. Would that be so?
Down the road, Megan.
Let us see, that's a benefit that you're saying, so who are we aligned? What kind of employer are we trying to attract? And if we could do something like, I don't know, be on the fourth or seventh, or anything, what would be on this side or something like that? As far as that on a full one there, something like that maybe.
And we, we would have to go back out, um not only through our broker, but as part.
I'm not interested in the issue, but maybe.
It's part of the benefit. What benefits are we agreeing? Councilmember Sinatik? Councilmember Stevens? Okay, any more discussion? Let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Passage unanimously. That is it for the action items, moving on, the city council number comments, council number so.
Um I'd like to thank Linda and Gilbert for their very powerful. And Gilbert's the greatest. Things are all sympathetic, now the problem is. Not that we would love to give y'all seven thousand. As our budget on other. Other problems. We got them wanting to give down seven thousand. But we're sympathetic, we're all thinking about it. I know y'all understand. They're not. I know you understand. If if it went, we gave y'all seven thousand. We're gonna have them lined up out here. They're all gonna want seven thousand. Dollars, we're gonna stall. None of us are gonna want to stop, we're all gonna want it. Water party. Gonna have to count themselves, so let us, let us all think. Appreciate all of your cute orange shirt.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Danz? Councilmember Sinatik?
I'm in support of.
Councilmember Stevens? So I want to say I'm supportive of sunshine house too. It might need a council piece towards a policy on our donations, now and who we donate to, what the criteria are. If there's a time limit and application process or something in order to prevent. Line out the door of people twenty seven thousand. That's exactly. Alright, so that takes us to item number eleven, executive session pursuant to chapter five five one of Texas government code. The city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time if deemed necessary. During this meeting for issued hosted agenda, item or receive advice from the attorney. As permitted by law, tonight the city council will reset the executive session pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one. Consult with the attorney. May I get a motion to? Hey, may I have a second? Alright, so we think of session, any discussion? And let's vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. Hey, we are into executive session at seven ten.
Yeah, I wanna grow art out. All day long too, right?
May I put in some motion and a second to reconvene to open session?
Oh.
Okay, any discussion? Vote all in favor of reconvene to open session, raise your right hand. Passage to the end of the slide. This brings us to item number 12. Oh yes, we are reconvening to open session at 8:06 PM. So this brings us to item number 12, action after executive session. May I put you on the motion?
We're gonna vote in that the city council threw a motion and said we met with the city attorney to discuss the following items.
Turning client privilege, AEP negotiations, old schoolhouse fees, nonprofit donation, neighborhood center REITs, STR, conveying of city-owned property, possible dottery well use, and TES counter. Okay, may I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, let's vote all in favor of your right hand. passage to the end of the slide. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn? No vote, I will like that. All right, the meeting has been on the job. Wow. Well done y'all, well done. We'll have a short meeting.